Okay, Mr. Wilson, you can start with your opening statement.
Yes, sir. My name is Grady Wilson. I reside at 10 Buena Vista Avenue in Cambridge, Maryland. I was born and raised in Dorchester County. I was in the first class to graduate from the Cambridge South Dorchester High School in 1977.
Hello, everybody. My name is Lenny Pfeffer, and I'm running unopposed this year, which I'm quite humbled to, in the fourth district of the county, which is the Hurlock, East Newmarket, and Secretary Areas. I moved to Dorchester County in 1994, so I've lived here for 28 years. I know I'm not born and raised here, but I've never leave in here. So we moved here, I mean, from the hustle bustle across the bridge because of the way of life over here, and that's something we need to preserve. So again, I'm running for District Four unopposed this year.
My name is Rick Travers. I am running for reelection for District Three County Council. I grew up here all of my life. I have a lovely wife. We married 43 years. We have four kids, four daughter-in-laws, and 11 grandkids, and we own Simmons Center Market down the street here. So we try to be integral part of the county.
Describe three ways, please, to increase revenues for the county that you would like to implement during the next four years.
Well, there's only two ways that the county can really get revenue right now, and that's taxes and fees. And nobody wants to see the taxes go up. Your increased revenue does come somewhat through your assessments when it goes up and things like that. So we need to try to stabilize our tax rate and not raise the tax rate just to get the revenue in. We just need to be a little bit more astute with how we spend the money that we have.
Taxes are very high in Dorchester County. We do not need to raise those. We need to go after state and federal grants to help, you know, people with their taxes, the revenues in Dorchester County, and, you know, to provide the resources that we need so we don't have to raise taxes.
So I can see a lot of this is going to be what they said, but I feel the same way as far as we need to increase the tax base, not the tax rate. So we need to make Dorchester County appealing for citizens to move here, for businesses to come here. We need to look at our tourism really good. We have such the gamut of history and recreation, wildlife, so many things for people to do coming here to Dorchester County. And we should also look at opportunities that are available through the federal and state government as far as grants and some other options there.
The county has received in excess of $3 million in American Rescue Plan Act funds. That's the ARPA money, so far that is, and will soon be getting an additional distribution for a similar amount. What do you propose we spend or allocate those funds on?
So we've already made a commitment to spend money for broadband. We've already set aside $1.2 million of our total of $6.2 million of the ARPA funds. We've received the first tranche, call it, which is $3.1 million. So we have to look at that. We've also helped out the Bonnybrook community with new water meters and some service lines over there. I personally feel that we need to look to our employees, too, who put in such a sacrifice during the time of COVID, one of the main while the COVID was very rampant in our area. So broadband, the sewer systems, the water systems, and those things are some of the things we're looking at. We're getting ready to have a workshop at the county level at, I think it's June 14th, at the County Council Building. I encourage all citizens, municipalities, everybody to reach out to us, to give us ideas. We want to hear what you want us to spend this money on.
As Councilman Pfeffer said, we have committed some of the money so far. We've had many, many requests for that money. But we have to remember one thing. When we take this money, when we use it for a project, we can't use it to balance the budget. We can't use it to drop your taxes. What we have to do is, this is one-time money that you're going to get, and we need to make sure that we spend it on key items that will either help drive revenue, help drive tourism, or things like that down the road. The key thing was broadband, and council felt like this was one of the major things that needed to happen. We need to make sure that broadband is accessible in every household in Dorchester County. We found those pitfalls out during COVID with the Board of Ed, with the kids couldn't get online and things like that to learn. And again, the water system that was in Bonnybrook was in such terrible shape. But we've got many other projects that have been put before us, and we are certainly interested in looking at all of them.
One of the things we need to do is address the children in Dorchester County to make sure they have a good education, a good upbringing. Another thing is the Sheriff's Department. Don't cut the revenues for the Sheriff's Department at EMS. Those folks take care of us. They do a hard job taking care of us. Do not cut their budgets.
What are your thoughts on the charter amendments regarding transparency that are being pursued by the Dorchester Charter Change Commission regarding online and video access to council meetings?
This is one of the most important parts of this election. People, folks of Dorchester County, need to know what goes on in county meetings, and we are fortunate to have two representatives here that voted for that. Boards one, two, and five voted against it. You know, they're the biggest people in Dorchester County that can't get to meetings. Where in COVID, we were COVID situations where older folks were scared to come out, and it takes about $1,200 a year to broadcast those meetings to the folks in Dorchester County. That's a very important part of transparency in Dorchester County. And we need the transparency on the meetings so people know what's going on.
Grady, thanks for pointing that out. I may speak tonight about certain issues that happened, and I'm not taking any shots at any other person on the council. Each of us was elected by citizens because the citizens in that area wanted a change, and they wanted to put somebody in that area. So when I say there was a vote, a three to two, or whatever the situation is, I'm not taking any personal shot at that. I'm just looking at the big picture of the issue. We did try. I tried twice, brought it up as motions. One time, I even asked to pay for it myself, and it was shot down. But I can tell you, that will be my number-one priority going into the new year, next year, to get these meetings on the internet so you can see what's going on, because a lot of people can't necessarily make it at 6 o'clock on a evening. A lot of elderly people are homebound, but they still pay taxes, and they still want to see what's going on. So we have to make this available to all citizens at their convenience.
We live in 2022, and the technology that is available today is far beyond where we are as the council. We do not need to be on a horse and cart when we should be on the broadband expressway. The process of what they've put together here tonight is simple, but it's certainly a work in progress, and it makes it happen for this debate. The council, as Councilman Pfeffer said, we've tried hard, but they weren't interested. So what I can tell you is, yes, I would like to see the latest and greatest technology that would work, that would allow people from their homes, as they should be able to, to have access to any of the county meetings that go on.
Your thoughts on the charter amendment regarding the county manager position that's being pursued by the Dorchester Charter Change Commission? That would limit the council's ability to hire and fire department heads for purely political or personal reasons?
What I would tell you is this. The charter has been in position for a long time. The charter is not broke. What we have to focus on is a strong county manager to run the government. Once you put that person in there, then you don't have to worry about some of the other problems that are coming along. But when you don't have a manager at the top that will take care of the process, that will be able to make sure that things go as they should.
One of the first things we need to do is hire a county manager that is in the business of running a county. With that person involved and that person in place, that takes away the decisions from the county council and the knowledge that that county manager has of running the business day-to-day operations.
So first, you know, everybody here knows that we haven't had a county manager for a while now, and I just want to give a shout out and thank Ms. Lane for stepping in to do the job that she's done in addition to her other duties as well. So thank you very much on that, Donna. But through the leadership and management training that I've had, there's a thing called unity of command, and this applies to military, public safety, and business as well. Anybody that has employees, those employees need to only report to one boss. If you have anything different, it causes confusion and conflict. So if we have a situation right now that I say that we need a covert changed up north, and Ricky says we need a covert in the city changed, and we tell the director, and he gives him five different jobs, and then Ms. Lane gives him a job, which one do they do? They're confused on that. We need one strong county manager, and all of us need to relay our needs and wants through the county manager so that the county manager can appropriately manage the day-to-day operations of the county. So I am in favor of a strong county manager.
What do you think is the cause for the large and unusual turnover in department heads in the county in recent years, and how do you plan to address it?
So some of this, it does delve into personnel issues, which some things we can't discuss with you. There's been extremely high turnover of our county management, and a couple I agreed with, but for the majority, I did not. I think that a person needs to be left to run their own department, not necessarily micromanaged and scared away. I think that if we would have left some of these people to do the full capacity of their jobs and work with us, some of these people might still be here today. But, you know, I have real concern that we need to look at the management and leadership of our whole county, make some fine-tuning things. I'm a big advocate of progressive discipline. So if we have a problem with you, then I'm going to let you know and talk to you about it. Or, not my situation, but we'll have the county manager. If we see problems, have the county manager look at that. If they continue to make mistakes, we step up that discipline a little bit. But you need to follow up, and you can't just jump to termination on a lot of issues. So progressive management, let the directors do what they want, and let that county manager run day-to-day operations.
Thank you. Some of these county, some of these county department heads definitely left because of the management style that's going on right now. They don't feel like they have that central focus as far as the right person to answer. Some of them left because there is a large demand for good people right now, a large demand in this workforce, and much higher salaries are being paid. Even our neighboring counties are doing that. So what we need to do is, we need to make sure we've got the right person that's running the county. We need to make sure that the right people under him are getting a good salary and that they feel like that they can speak up on what types of projects that they want to run, or what types of operations that they want to do, and that's key. We cannot stifle a department head. We need to let them, as Councilman Pfeffer said, run their department.
As of now, we have some of the best department heads in the business. We need to let them do their job, stop getting into day-to-day operations with those people, and that's what a county manager would do. If there's particular council people that think they can run the county, then they should stay out of that. Give it to a county manager.
Please describe your understanding of the current state of our emergency medical services division and what you'd like to seek change, if anything.
Well, one of the things that we need to change is this ARPA monies. We need to invest in our EMS departments, give them the ability to have the equipment and things they need, train, give them training and hire a new directory if that's what we need to do. Main thing is fund EMS.
So as far as our EMS system, unfortunately, we're in a situation where we're short people right now, and we've had times where we've been dangerously short. And we're still in a situation where we're dangerously pushing our providers to work mandated overtime shifts. The problem with that is, we have people leave, and it's been a thing over the years. It's not necessarily a new thing, but a lot of people use Dorchester County as a jumping-off point. Somebody might get an education here, put in some time, and then realize, I can go across the bridge and make a lot more money. And we lose people that way sometimes. But what happens is, when we have a vacancy, that means other people are forced to work that. Sometimes they can do it voluntarily on their days off, but unfortunately, we're seeing more and more of a trend where people aren't necessarily voluntarily picking up a shift, and we're holding over our employees at the end of their shift, or the beginning sometimes, for an additional 12 to sometimes 24 hours. So when you start taxing your employees at that rate, their frustration, their anger builds up more, and it becomes an exponential problem. So then they leave. So now we have more vacancies. So we have to really make sure, I have to say, this council has done some great improvements for the salaries of our EMS employees, but there's still work to be done. We have to look at the salaries compared to the surrounding areas that we have, and we need to find ways that we can make sure that management shows the importance of these individuals, and when it may not necessarily be that much money and a small increase, that the management respects them and wants them there so that we can keep them in this county.
Most of our staff with EMS is here because they want to work in Dorchester County. There's a lot higher-paying jobs in EMS right now, just like it is, just like we spoke earlier about the salary situation. We're not where we need to be, and the demand for EMS workers, whether it be an EMT or whether it be a paramedic, is very high. There's one local county that's put a LEOPS program in, which is like an early retirement program, a great incentive for this type of work, because it allows these people who have gone through a very stressful time, if they work 10, 15, 20 years, it gives them a way to have a very good retirement. So these are the type of things that we really have to look at. We have to look at how we can take care of our employees. Right now, we're not running enough units. In our county, we need to add at least one more unit, if not two, 24/7 a day, because we're running, sometimes we're running two, three, four calls, and they're having to come from all over the county to cover it. Granted, Cambridge is one of the busiest places, and we've got two units running here, but it's not enough, and we need to add it. And we've been trying to add another unit, and we're going to get to the point where we're going to have to add two units right now.
The county council recently voted on pay increases for sheriff department staff, but excluded the deputies that guard the courthouse. What are your thoughts on that decision?
Our thoughts are, my thoughts are this. Councilman Pfeffer and I both pushed for this to be a blanket pay increase. We didn't want to choose, pick and choose. This is public safety, and that's how we took care of it. Deputies, no matter where. Some deputies were singled out because of where they're working. It was inappropriate. It shouldn't have happened, and we can only hope that we can still change that, because we don't want to lose the deputies that we have there. They do a great job in the courthouse.
Their deputies that work in the courthouse are deputies. When they leave that courthouse, they still have to go on a call if they're called to go on a call. So why would we cut their pay? There's two full-time employees for the sheriff's department assigned to the courthouse. By cutting their pays, now we've gone into the retirement fund, cutting their retirement fund. That shouldn't be allowed. There's no reason to cut their pays.
So again, like Councilman Travers said, myself and Councilman Travers both voted in opposition of denying the court security their money. They're a uniformed officer. They protect the court system. They will protect citizens if they're around. There's no reason that they should have been separated from that money. So that's my answer.
How do you see yourself as a defender of property rights? How does that relate to things like renewable energy, title rise, rails to trails, other projects of that kind?
That's a very controversial issue. So I feel very strongly that if you own property, you should be able to do what you want to do on that property. One of the biggest property rights issues that's come up in this county is solar, is utility-grade solar. And so how do I go about saying, you have the right to do what you want on your property, but not solar? So it's okay, though, if you grow pigs. And I don't know if you've ever been near a pig farm, but it doesn't smell very good. But you have the right to do that, because every one of us had bought property in this state, in this county, signed a right-to-farm notice. So that can be done. What if I were to tell the farmers, you cannot grow any crops within 100 feet of an intersection because it causes a safety issue with traffic control? What if I tell you that hemp, which is a big up-and-coming crop, you can't grow hemp on your property because some people think it smells? So we have to find ways to balance property rights and the overall community rights as well, and find ways that we can work together as a community to look at these issues.
When we started this, probably four years ago, five years ago, we started this with the utility solar. And that farmer has to make a choice. That farmer took the dice to say, well, I am going to raise corn. Corn prices are really good right now. I'm not going to do solar. But I am not in that position to tell that gentleman or that family, that farm family that's been in the family for years, how he can run his farm. We have enough problem running the county as the county. What we need to do is, we need to support them and show them, maybe it needs to be in certain areas, or it needs to be shielded. But I am not for telling somebody that, you know, what's next? Are we going to tell them that they can't raise corn, or they can't raise beans, they can only, you know, do truck crops? It's just not, I don't feel like it's right. The defender of property rights is 100% right. We expect them to pay taxes. I'm not going to go in there and tell them how to make money on that farm to pay their taxes.
The county council is not into business of running farms and pig farms, chicken farms, any other kind of farms. Leave that to the farmers to run their own farms. Work with those people to make things work for them. Our tax base comes from them. Let's work with those folks to get a better understanding of what they need.
What is your understanding of affordable workforce housing, and how would you support additional development and tax incentives for the creation and/or redevelopment of affordable workforce housing?
One thing is to offer tax incentives for businesses coming to town. When the businesses come to town, they bring a workforce with them, which increases our tax base.
So when you say affordable workforce housing, that can mean different things to different people, depending on the community you live in. The average median income in Dorchester County is around $50,000. So for some people that are in the $20,000 to $25,000 bracket, their affordable housing is different than ours. I mean, I know there's been some ideas, one of the state ideas, where they were hoping they could turn a Hearne building into affordable housing for nurses, firemen, paramedics. But we need money. At the county level, unfortunately, we don't have the resources for projects of that magnitude. So we certainly would support, I shouldn't say we, I would support affordable workforce housing, but we need a lot of help from state and/or federal as well to get a project like that off the ground and into fruition.
Well, we have had a program which was initiated many years ago, which is called excise tax. We have abated the excise tax, I believe it's been about eight or 10 years now. So we've been continually pushing to try to make sure, this is an incentive, because this is an incentive for development, because now when somebody comes in, I know when several of these units were done downtown here, they were charged by the apartment, and it was a substantial amount of money. So now that developer doesn't have to pay that excise tax, and it is still, the council has voted, this council has voted also, over the last four years to continue to abate that excise tax. But that's a help, and plans like that are a help, and I do support additional development, and it's coming. A lot of these things will come on their own. During COVID, people found out that, hello, we love the eastern shore. We want to go there. They have internet, and it's getting better, and we can not only live there and have that style of living, but we can also work there from home remotely. And that's the type of things that we need to go for. We need to make sure that those things are available for those people who want to move here and live here.
Thanks, Mr. Travers. Let's give you the next question first. What long-term solutions do you see to better protect Dorchester County and surrounding areas from the increased threat of climate change and flooding?
There's a lot of programs out there that are going on right now. We have done a number of hazardous mitigation studies. We just had a study done, and we got a report on it probably two weeks ago. They did a study on Hoopersville, what to do, how to handle it. I mean, they're pretty much on the forefront. Cambridge has got some issues, and the neck district's got some issues, but I would say out of any of it, Hoopers Island's probably the worst one. And it's a very unique plan. It identifies the places, the residents, how many is there, what can we do, and number one, how can we afford it? The plan was like $75 million, I think it was, Monday, Monday.
The lower plan.
The lower plan, yeah. That was a lower plan to mitigate down there. So I think we need to continue to look at these plans, continue to see what we can do to, you know, you're thinking about raising, Dorchester County has 575 miles of road in it, and trying to raise road, and probably a third of that would be very, very expensive. And if you raise a road, you still got to figure out how to raise, you know, the property, whether it's driveways going to the houses or whatever. And there's a lot of houses that are being lifted right now. Once they've notified and they've identified them as problem areas, and the federal government is working with some of them on grants and things like that to help them happen.
The Cambridge Shoreline Project is in the process of obtaining $10 to $20 million for things like your shorelines and those things. And at the same time, we could go to DHCD and find out if there's any monies available for us as the county to do any similar projects.
Climate change means different things to different people. Some people believe that it's sea level rise that's causing some of our issues. Some people think that it's erosion causing some of our issues. Well, we have problems, and anybody that lives anywhere in this county realizes that we have water on our streets in a lot of places. There's been stuff done throughout the years as far as building standards, raising buildings up, putting blow-through vents and stuff like that that we're trying to do to protect people's property in the long term so they can still get insurance on those properties. You know, I actually, I hate to say it, but I've had citizens from the north area say, why are we trying to do stuff for the 30 or 40 people that live on Elliot's Island, or the few people that live all the way in Hoopersville? Well, those are the people that are from this county and have generations of people here. So we have to find some ways to try to help them. But like Councilman Travers said, one of the middle options for Hoopersville alone was $75 million. Some were over $100 million. So those projects are extremely expensive, and no way can the county afford to do something like that. We just recently did put in for some earmarks for different things down South County, and unfortunately, we were turned down on those congressional earmarks. So we need to find ways to work with the communities and with the state and federal governments on projects like Poplar Island. If we can get some of these barrier islands out there finished, it may help with some of the erosion and the tidal issues that are and the title issues that are occurring in the south part of our county.
How do you plan to involve residents in the decision-making process of this counting?
I try to do a lot of social media, mainly Facebook, to be honest, because Twitter hasn't really taken over in my generation of people especially. But I try to keep my community involved and informed through general Facebook posts. When I see something that's important to all them, I try to share it so they can attend a meeting or look for further information. If there's major products like CWDI had some issues, had some surveys. The business community had some surveys and everything that they wanted to do. I just try to let them know that way. Being out in the public, going to local businesses, talking to people. We all have county phones. Mine's 443-521-3690. Call me anytime you need anything. And if I don't have an answer, I will find an answer for you or we can work together on those issues.
I would, again, I'll go back to technology because we're not doing the job that we need to be doing. We've got better resources through the technologies out there today. It has been a problem to get citizens involved. As long as I've sat in this office, there has always been open spots on different committees. And we've got a fair amount of them still out there right now. We advertise them in the paper and things like that. But there is still a lot of people that'll say, you know, they, they might want to come to a meeting every now and then. But they might not want to stand up and say, hey, I'll serve on that committee or I'll help you make these decisions or get that information done. So, you know, I would tell the citizens also to get involved and, and do a better job with technology on getting it out there. What's coming up in the next decisions, similar to the, the technology of getting the meetings up on air, but also the technology of getting the papers and the information out for the meeting ahead of time so people can review it.
Thank you. We, we have too many folks in the, in the county that are very talented and, and can see things done, give us advice, have more meetings, involve those people and see if, you know, the betterment of the, of the county.
How important do you feel it is to have a strong working relationship with the state and with federal legislators and their staffs and why?
Well, one thing is the state and federal legislators, they legislate for us to get grants. So if we partner with those folks to get our grant monies, that relieves some of our tax burdens on the citizens. Keep involved with the state and federal legislators.
I'm the retired guy, so I go to a lot of meetings. So sometimes the meetings are, are full of information. I like to bring them back and share the information. Sometimes they're a little slow getting along, but the main thing is the networking. You know, I try to go to chamber events, so I meet the local business leaders. I can get on the phone right now and get ahold of any of our state delegates, our, our state House of Delegate or the state senator. And I'm also connected with the federal delegation, the representatives for the eastern shore for both of our senators and Congressman Harris. And I can send him an email, get on the phone with them and say, hey, we have a problem. How can we work together on these issues? So having that network ability means so much. So that's, I think it's very important to keep up with our, our networking.
These relationships, you need to make sure they're strong all the time. We just cannot go knocking on their door when we need grants or we need money. We need to be in contact with them on a weekly or monthly basis. As Councilman Pepper said, I am very blessed. We have very good connections personally with all of our legislatures from the federal side to the state side. But we do need to do better because these people can help us. They see things on the federal side that can say, you know, I mean, the simple thing is the barren island gaps dredging projects. We've been pushing very hard and a lot of times I'll get an email or we'll get an email from one of the legislators saying, hey, this earmark money's coming up. Why did you not put in for that? So yes, these relationships need to be strong and they need to be strong all the time.
Describe the ideal working relationship between the county school board and the county council. What do you believe would result from that working relationship?
We all have to work together. We all have to have one common goal. Education is a very key factor in this county. We need to go back to our meetings. At one time we were having meetings monthly, two on two. And that way you can sit down and just have off the cuff discussions that are not driven by sunshine law meetings and things like this. And that's where you can kind of come up with different ideas on how to make things happen. But it's very key because your business community, that's the very first thing they look at when they say, well, we might move there and, and open a business there. They look around and they see the numbers on the school system and they think, well, maybe I don't think so. Or the employees might say, well, I'm not going to move there. You might have the business there, but I'm going to move somewhere else. So yeah, that's very key. We need to spend a lot of time on it and working to make it better.
As Councilman Travers had said, we were having some regular monthly meetings with the school board. I hate to say, but COVID threw a wrench in all that. We tried doing some Zoom meetings and everything. But unfortunately something happened and the school board had stopped attending our meetings. But I hope that we can get those back again. But realize that just between our property tax and our income tax, we have $53 million of income, of revenue coming in between property and income taxes. Education is $22 million that we put out for there. So it's a significant portion. To me, the main two priorities of government are protecting the citizens and educating the children. So that's, it's a main priority that we have to get along because unfortunately what happens most of the time and in the years past and even a little bit currently is they, the only time we see them is when they come and say, okay, here's what my budget's going to be. Here, here's how much I need to do the school this year. And then we're like, whoa, it was kind of a surprise. So having a good relationship with the school board is very important.
Please describe your understanding of the role of parks and recreation in the impact and the impact on our residents in the county.
Parks and Rec plays a very important part that people don't realize is we actually have a very small Parks and Rec staff. But they do so much. We have, they take care of the, the baseball fields. They take care of the sporting fields. They take care of the other parks. And we need to make sure that our kids have a place to expel energy and to do things that kids do. Having a place for kids will hopefully keep kids on the right track. Organized sports teaches teamwork, responsibility, gives confidence to kids. So youth sports are very important, but yet we also need to look for the adults walking trails, other parks, places of interest. So when people look to move to an area, many times they will do the research to see what kind of parks and amenities does that county have? So we need to make sure that we do keep an eye on Parks and Rec and keep them in the forefront.
Parks and Recs is so much more than softball, baseball, basketball, soccer. In today's world, they're, they're branching out so many different ways. You know, we need to look for ways to include, include across into it. This board just moved through with a purchase of the old racket club building and that's gave us a nice indoor facility to work with. And we also have the largest swimming pool on the eastern shore, outdoor pool. So we have a lot of good items, but there's also a lot of things that we need to bring in. We've got a beautiful beachfront over there in front of Sailwinds area. And there should be more things available there that we could work with through Parks and Recs, whether it be canoes or whether it be kayaks or, you know, there's so many other options. We've got a beautiful county. We've got beautiful land in this county. And we need to make sure that we bring the kids up and let them not only, they'll, they'll learn by it by getting out in the, out in the wild and learning to respect it.
We, we need to fund the Parks and Recs more than what we're funding now. When I was growing up, we had summer programs that were initiated through Parks and Rec. Those programs are not there now.
What should the council be interacting with or how should the council be interacting with and supporting county municipalities like Cambridge, of course?
Well, my understanding at this council here was re, was working with the city council of Cambridge. And some, for some reason that abruptly ended. Now I would almost guess, and I can talk about personnel issues. I'm not a council person. But I would almost bet those two gentlemen sitting to my right was not part of that.
So, so we have reached out to the city to make sure that we can start having a better line of communications with the city. The city has gone through some changes over the past year or two. New city council, all new people on there. The mayor situation. There are certain dynamics that have prevented us from maybe being as aggressive with our communication line that we could do. But as far as municipalities like myself, I have the municipalities of Hurlock, East Newmarket and Secretary. I attend all their town meetings. So that way I can relate to them important information that's happening in their district and they have the opportunity along with their audience as well to interact with me to make sure that I can help to answer their questions or start to resolve some problems they have.
We used to have monthly meetings with the city, again, two on two, similar to what we did with the board event. And it was very productive. You can, like I said, solve a lot of things when you're just sitting around trying to figure out what's up, what's coming up, where you're headed. And the last time I checked, all of these municipalities are in Dorchester County. So we need to be a part of what's going on, whether we assist them however it needed to be, whether we're sending a letter of support to one of the state or federal locations or delegations, or whether we're just helping them figure out a simple grass cutting situation or a ditch clean out or trash day for when they do a, a community cleanup or whatever. You know, simple things can be worked out, but it's that, it's that consistent meeting. I know very well all the people on the city council and work with them, but we still can do better and we can do it better in these, in these extra meetings.
Describe three key issues that you're addressing in your campaign and why they are important to the community.
Well, I would tell you that the, the three top things in my campaign are the public safety, law enforcement and the EMS. Right now those, that, that public safety division is not getting the funding it's needed. They are definitely understaffed and they're having to deal with a lot of things. Not just Dorchester County's things, but law enforcement, the respect for them, the problems that they're running into when they go into these tense situations. And EMS too, they're, they're in that situation and, and they are having to deal with things that we've never seen and we never had to deal with. So we need to make sure that that's a priority in the budget, that the salaries are up, that the, the equipment's there for them. Transparency. We need to make sure that things are being done the proper way. We make, make sure that they're done according to the charter, that the information is getting out to the public, that the decisions are being made in the correct way. And education. We have to have a lot of help to get our numbers up, to get our students up. But again, there's a lot of changes happening and happening in education. At the state level with these new programs coming down, the funding is going up exponentially. That's required of us and programs that are need to be run are going up. So the demands are up, teachers are burnt out, discipline issues in the school. So many things going on and we're not going to be able to solve them all, but we should, we should be able to be there and, and help it.
One is transparency. That needs, that needs to happen. Folks in Dorchester County need to know what's going on in these meetings. Contact your representatives, ask them to bring it up on the floor again to vote, put it on the ballot for November for transparency, to have county meetings run either through town hall streams, Bay County Communications. EMS, we, we need to fund those people. I mean, there again, they, they work and hope, God forbid, if you have to call them and they can't get out because they don't have the equipment to get out to you. The sheriff's department's another one. Fund the sheriff's department. They protect us. Do not cut their budget.
One of the things I think is so important for Dorchester County right now is the recruitment and retention of quality employees. Like Councilman Travers said, our public safety has been hit very strong. Recruitment and retention of volunteers. The volunteer fire companies are having a heck of a time finding new volunteers. And you're saying, well, recruitment and retention, that's not something that concerns the citizens. That's not what the citizens want. But we're in the business of providing services to the citizens for the tax dollars that they put pay. So we need to have quality employees and we're having a really tough time. I can go out and buy the most expensive dump truck and the best paramedic unit out there. But if I don't have people to put in those seats to run those things and to run our departments, it's useless. So we have to take care of our employees, get great employees, take care of them and keep them. Jobs, jobs and job training. I recently attended an event that was discussing especially youth nowadays. And there's like a paradigm shift going on where there's discussion of retraining employers. Because the newer generation have a different outlook. They don't necessarily want the 30-year plan. So we need to work with the employers and the people in the school system. And we need to make sure that some of the resources, just like DCTC, we can use for job training to give people new skills and to let them advance in the skills that they have. And then obviously transparency. So I think we need to be transparent. And I think the live streaming of the, of meetings would be a, a great start for that.
Please tell us about your background, your experience involving in the community and what knowledge and strengths you would bring to the county council.
So from a young kid, I was involved in scouting. I was involved in something called Civil Air Patrol. It was the auxiliary to the air force. And I always wanted to have a connection with the community in some way. My parents were involved in school. I was blessed to have an incredible childhood and had some great parents that really felt it was important to participate in that. I worked for a car dealership at one time where I was a service manager. I worked in the auto industry for a while. But my main career, I worked 23 years as a professional firefighter, retired as a lieutenant after having a serious back injury and surgery, which put me down. My wife and I, we moved to the county in 1994. So we've been here 28 years. And like I said before, we never want to go back, you know, since we've been here. I've been the president of the secretary fire company. I've been the president of the Dorchester County Firemen's Association. I'm a trustee at my church. I'm a Red Cross volunteer. When you have the fires, Ricky goes and puts them out and then I come behind them and then help the people with their needs right after the fire. I volunteered with a great program for a while called Character Counts at the elementary school, which unfortunately COVID knocked that right out. But it gave me a good connection with the kids and the school system. So I've tried to, to volunteer as much as I can out in the community. Since I've been on the council, I, I serve as the representative for the midshore regional council, which is a great economic driver for the midshore area. I sit as the legislative representative for the Maryland Association of Counties and the vice chair of the Mako Land Services Committee. I'm also on the Mako Board of Directors. I was chosen from my colleagues from all around the state. So I'm very humbled and honored with that position. So I really try to get involved with the community as much as possible. So I don't have any great degree in management. I, I haven't owned a large business. But I think every citizen has the right to be a representative of their community if their community elects them and puts them in that position. That's what the community wanted and that's every citizen's right to do that.
Well, I've worked my entire life in business. Worked for the family business and started out, like I started out there, I think she, my mom said when I was six months old. So we've been there, three months old, sorry. So we've been there quite a bit and we've, over the period of time that we've been there, we've been able to change with the times and been able to move forward. Understand what the people want. And if that's what you're able to do, if you're able to, to, to take care of your customers. And that's what each and every one of you are here. The taxpayers are customers of the county and we're here to take care of you. I was blessed to be appointed to this office when a very great gentleman passed away. Mr. Dr. Tom Flowers was in this position in August of 2005 when he died. I got appointed for one year and I've served four terms since then. So I'm in my 17th year of being on this seat. And it's been a blessing. It's been interesting times and I've seen a lot of things come and go through those 17 years. I have learned a lot. I've worked on 16 budgets. Current one was seven, about $75 million. I have 42 years in volunteer service with Rescue Fire Company. All four of the boys came through the same service with the volunteer fire service. Some of them chose careers through that fire service. With council, I started, like I said, September 7th, September 2nd. I served from, I served as president of the council from 2014 to 2018. Served on many committees, Midshore Regional Council and a number of others. I feel like with my experience through the business, my experience in the community and my previous experience on the council, that I can take care of this situation for you. I'd like to serve another four years for you.
My background would be, I've been self-employed for over 30 years. I worked at Cambridge Wirecloth starting in 1978. In my capacity at Cambridge Wirecloth as a production worker, I was also a union representative. I was a grievance committee man, which I had the pleasure of representing my fellow employees. If they had grievances because of the work, the workbooks for the, that the company handed out, I would file the grievances for them and such, you know, I have experience in protecting people's rights. Currently I still own Cherokee Home Improvements. I quit Wirecloth in 1992. I'm currently owner and operator of Cherokee Home Improvements. And me and my wife also are the owners and operators of Carol's Kitchen.
And Mr. Wilson, just by utter and total coincidence, you gave the first opening statement and you also get the first closing statement. Any points you want to emphasize?
I would ask the two gentlemen, yield their time to me, please. Like I said, I was born and raised in Dorchester County, first class graduate from Cambridge South Dorchester High School. In 1978, I went to work at Cambridge Wirecloth, served on a grievance committee, recorded secretary. From there on, like 1992, I wanted to go to work for myself, decided to do that. I've been self-employed ever since. And there again, currently my wife and myself are owners and operators of Carol's Kitchen.
So as I said earlier tonight, I'm unopposed, unopposed in the primary, unopposed in the general. I'm very humbled by this. People have called me and they've said, where are your signs? I don't see your signs. Are you running? I am. But the population around in my district must have felt confident in the work that I've done so far. And I hope that's the case. I don't take this lightly. You don't see my signs because one of the main things with signs and every one of us that's running will probably heard a few times is I gotta move your darn sign every time I cut my grass. So I figured I would just give my citizens in my district a break from having to move my darn signs. But I'm not taking this for granted. I am just so humbly honored to have the experience that I've had for the past three and a half years. And I look forward to serving the citizens of my district and this county for the next four years. And I ask any citizen, citizen to please feel free, reach out, contact your council person. So here's the thing, I've had a job for the last three and a half years. Everybody out here, they have a job for one day, two days, voting days. Please, regardless of who you're going to vote for, go out and do your citizenly duty and please vote. The primaries coming up July 19th. The general is in November. Please exercise your right to vote. That's all I ask. Thank you very much.
Thank you. I'd like to thank the chamber and WHCP and all of others that, that are involved in setting this up. It takes a lot of time. You're doing seven of them. So that's at least eight or 10 nights that you're committed to putting this stuff together. And it takes a lot and we thank you from the bottom of our hearts to get this out through technology. Hello, we can do this. Hence, hence. But I do thank you very much for putting this on and, and taking the time to contact everybody and try to be fair and equal in what you're doing. God has certainly been a very, very large part of my life. I am very blessed with the family I have, with the parents I have and with the children and the grandchildren I have. Four kids, four, four adorable daughter, granddaughter-in-laws and 11 grandkids. And I can tell you, if I, if I fall out tomorrow, I, I can't complain a bit. I am so blessed to be where I'm at. Work alongside my wife every single day. And that's just a, it's just a plus. But God has blessed me to serve these 17 years. He showed me a lot. He has certainly trained me and taught me a lot through this situation. And I hope to continue. But this office is not a one-person office. This office is a team. The stronger the team, the better we move forward. It's just like a rope. One strand's not much good. Two strands are better, three strands are better. I can only hope that we can get five strands wove tightly together and pull Dorchester County forward where we need to be. Thank you.